We have one thing on the agenda tonight which has to do with building codes. The strategic priorities from last meeting didn't get on this, this agenda. However, um, y'all got a copy of it, I think, last time. And I guess I just want to point out, the part of this was just to really make sure it was front and center, that we still keep our eyes on it. Um, I know we've been talking about some of these things during budgeting, so, um, and as we're working on thriving communities, which we'll get to about, talking about building codes, um, I think Paul, at some point, he's gonna, we're gonna get the housing task force back together. And, you know, there may be a couple of things in here that we could ask them to do. For example, like identify barriers to homeowners, stuff like that. So anyway, um, again, just keep your bat handy, so we, we don't forget what those things were. So, um, again, talking about building codes tonight, it's come up in the meetings that we've had specifically about thriving communities and our application for that. And, um, I think the idea here is that we feel like, particularly in the residential area, that we could start out in the residential area having building codes. Um, you know, we are one of the last standing cities to not have one. Doug and I have talked, and we feel like it is holding us back. We know that it is important in thriving communities. Um, and I think we have to show effort that we're moving forward for that. It may be that we don't have it exactly passed by the time this application goes in, but I think we definitely have to show an effort. We have to, um, show a plan for our code enforcement. How are they gonna get trained? You know, what's that timeframe to get the, uh, get that done? So, about an hour and a half ago, I, I called Eric Quaker, our old city administrator, to talk to him, since he's now the City of Carroll. Carroll is similar to size of Fairfield, it's a little bigger. Um, and just talk through with him what they have. Of course, they have commercial and residential. Um, he said basically, the code enforcement officer has to pass eight tests. Basically, four for residential, four for commercial. And they're related to the structural, electrical, plumbing, and HVAC system. Okay? So those are the four tests that have to be done on each side.
Are there any educational requirements part of that?
Well, probably classes, you know, and then, and then, and then they test and they have to get that certification. Yeah. And I think from, from what Aaron told me, certainly someone could do it on their own, or you can go take an intensive week and take classes and pass the test, is my understanding, based on what he said.
Would it be to have Weston do this?
I think so. So, um...
Do we already have a process for having electrical inspected? I feel like...
So there is state code for electrical. Um, Aaron said at Carroll, they have their own inspector do it because they can do it quicker than having the state come down and do it.
Oh, okay.
They can get to it quicker.
Okay.
So I thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
That was one of the complaints from the manufacturers, that the inspections from the state would slow things down.
Yes. So...
Yeah.
Oh! Sorry, we had a lot of waving in the back of the room. I kept like, whoa, what's going on? Okay, so, um...
We're trying to do it subtle, and that wasn't enough.
Yeah, right, sorry, I had my head down, looking at my notes. Um, Aaron's gonna send me their free fee structure tomorrow, so I'll have that. So I, what I, what kind of, I guess what I'm looking for from you guys tonight is sort of a head nod to move forward, and let's get some different cities' fee structures, um, see what those look like, and come up with, probably have Doug and maybe Weston, or however he wants to move forward, trying to figure out a timeframe. And, um, we'll have more discussion about this later. Is Melanie, you gonna add to that?
Um, so the proposed training, or the recommended training, um, that is included in next year's budget for presumably Weston, if, um, the council wishes for him to move forward with that. Um, that is included in the budget, uh, for him to go to, I think it's, the nearest is in Colorado. Uh, we've looked, uh, we've talked with Aaron as well, um, and tried some online ones. Um, but I, I think, excuse me, in-person is better for, um, a lot of people. And, um, the one thing I would say that's not included in the budget would be any sort of, like, managing, uh, software management, or, um, third-party inspectors, or, um, additional tools to help with this process. So the only thing that is in the budget is, um, the training for Weston.
Yeah, okay. Because, you know, we might wanna use an outside source, or temporarily, you know, to help in the training process for him, so yeah, these are good points.
Yeah.
That, um, we may need some help in that area. Good points.
May I ask, what was the biggest holdup previously when this was discussed? Manufacturing?
Commercial and industrial, yeah.
Well, construction people, home builders.
Yeah.
The room was filled with people who didn't wanna have it.
So I was, I guess I was just wondering what stopped it? Was it all those people, or is it one thing, or...
The biggest was this very point that's already been made about, um...
State inspection?
The state inspection. And, um, from what I've been reading, that hasn't improved in the state yet. And so, um, around the state, as building is happening now in many cities, that's become a problem, because it's really slowing things down. So we do need to keep that in mind.
Yeah.
I thought the biggest obstruction was the complaint about additional costs, that we already have an alphabet of federal agencies that require us to meet certain requirements, like OSHA, et cetera. We're already meeting those requirements, so why should we have another set of requirements? Which is to add to our cost and delay the building process. That was, that's what I got.
Pertaining to...
Commercial buildings.
Commercial, commercial.
Yeah, that was a big, big, big issue for commercial. Again, I think that's where, what was proposed last time was an outside firm, and they had a certain way they do it. Um, and if, if, you know, we don't have to do it that way, we can have a different fee structure. And I think we get our toes wet with the residential first, too, because that's what we're really trying to move forward. I will say that Aaron did give me an example of, uh, education building, you know, a school building that they were building up there, and, uh, the, they were pouring footings, and somebody went out to inspect, and it was apparently not correct, and the architect had sent the wrong thing to the builders. And so Aaron said, you know, it is a safety check. And it's not that they're doubting that, you know, the architects are, are, um, you know, good architects, and they're, they're giving good plans, and yet, on the other hand, that, you know, sometimes mistakes will be made. So, but again, I think where we're struggling the most is in the residential area, and, um, that is what I think our priority is right now.
And worst-case scenario, too, if we're trying to incentivize more building, we don't wanna have people come here and try to, you know, put up all these houses because we don't have building codes, you know? Like, of course, I don't wanna think that people would target us, you know, and, you know, try to take advantage of that, but I think it's really important to have it if we're trying to incentivize a lot of building quickly, because that's the potential issue I can see.
And I think in one of our last meetings, from my, my observation, it seems like we had two groups of people. People who just were quiet and listened, and, um, many of those I know personally, and I know they really care about how they rehab a home, and how they function as a landlord. And then we had another group of people who are very vocal, who, um, I would say, maybe got by very loosely...
Substandard, yeah.
Yeah, with substandard construction. We know we've got a couple of houses right now that have issues, structure walls being taken out, and I think it's time to say, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not, we're not putting up with that anymore. And, you know, we gotta put our big pants on and be the parent here. And, um, and if we really wanna get serious about moving forward, and I think we do, that this is the road we need to go down. So, again, uh, you know, I'm looking for your comments, and, um, kind of, yes, let's get some fee structures. Um, let's see what other people do. Um, Aaron said that Carroll has adopted the state code, which ref, which is the 2015 International Building Code, and he thought they were getting ready to update that for '21 or '22. So, um, he's assuming at some point they will update their code to the state code. So, and I had Jason bring that up on their site, because I thought it was kind of interesting. It's, I thought it was a nice site. So Jason, can you scroll down just a little bit? Um, right here at the very beginning, it shows you what permits are needed. So, um, of course, I can't read it clear over there. Um, building permits, electrical, plumbing, demolition, mechanical, right-of-way, sign permit, and solar permits. Now, those are all the permits that are needed. And then, you know, then it, it starts to scroll down more and says, okay, when is a building permit required? Um, and it starts to explain, you know, when that permit is required, has a value there, and then it looks like you can click right on there, the building permit, and, and actually get the permit that you need to fill out. So I thought this was a good place to kind of look and, and see what they're doing. And, um, so I, I would encourage anybody to look at those, uh, and bring up some other cities, and look and see what they have, and let's, let's bring the best ideas to the table. Any comments from anybody?
Uh, in the meantime, can we look at the, this is on the agenda, International Residential Building Code. I mean, that's a, that seems like a significant start.
Well, that's what we're really talking about.
Right.
Um, and I'm gonna send you, it, I was trying to get the right link to send, um, did you have a link to that?
I did not see it.
Yeah, I didn't think so. So, um, I'm gonna forward you the email that Faye sent me, because she did have a link in there. And, um, so you can actually go there and see that, to the state code.
Have we already talked about international residential building codes?
It's been several years.
No, like, not that long ago.
Property maintenance code.
Yeah.
For the property maintenance.
Right.
But I thought we, we were also talking about at some point adopting those, and then making, maybe taking that as a step towards, like, what you're saying, you know, then moving to the state code, right?
I, I think it was discussed.
Yeah, I thought we had that covered.
Yeah, we just, I think we adopted the International Building Maintenance Code and Rental, I think, or Rental Maintenance Code.
That's all we adopted at that point.
That's all we adopted.
Yep.
Yep.
So would this be something worth, is this appropriate to refer to property committee at this point to get some sort of viewpoint on it for our next meeting? Or what would you, what would you think would be the best way to go forward?
In, in the council meeting, you could make that referral.
In the council meeting, okay.
Isn't the idea of the study session, though, to hopefully maybe move forward with certain things without having to refer them to committee?
Yes, however, if a committee wants to take it up, I'm okay with that. Uh, you know, it's, it's really up to you, council, if you wanna, you know, really, if you wanna meet and take that next step, so that, uh, it doesn't lag and, and...
Right, right. I don't think we wanna, there's no reason to delay it. There's a, there's sort of a time element involved with our Thriving Iowa's community application, but I would think would move more quickly, and I, there'd be more confidence, at least I would have more confidence if I had somebody actually viewed it carefully and discussed it, and that would be the property committee, I think, in this particular instance. I don't know that, I mean, it could be the entire council was asked to look at it, but sometimes a few people looking at it are more likely to do it, and if you get a recommendation, we can move on that.
I've got, just, are, are we looking at one building code, or are we looking separate for residential and commercial?
I'd say we're looking at two. We're starting with residential.
Okay. So, which we didn't do last time. I think last time we tried to do one, and that was, which was one of the big stumbling blocks was because...
It was everything.
Right. And, and I think that was one of the big issues last time. I have no, I, I know the whole reason we started doing these meetings earlier, too, these workshops, was to eliminate some of the committee meetings, but this is gonna involve so much work and so much time that I think it has to be sent through a committee.
Okay.
Um, if it's even a fraction of what we went through last time when we tried to do this, so...
Okay.
So my understanding is, when you say residential building code, um, there is a residential building code that talks about, like, how many rooms need to be in a building, and how, um, how big the kitchen needs to be, and all of that type of stuff. That's the residential building code. Then, under that, then, is the residential electrical code, the residential HVAC code, or resi, or residential mechanical code, residential structural code. And, mm, and so I think that's the four tests that Connie's talking about. So those four different books that are a thousand pages make up residential building code. So you would pass four different codes in order to get that full package.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and we don't have that right now.
We don't have any of that.
Right.
We only have the property maintenance code. But I'm just clarifying that when you say residential building code, there's the residential building code proper in capital letters that is, you know, what size a kitchen has to be, and how far, and how high the countertops have to be. Um, and then there's residential building code lowercase level, lowercase, and that's all four of those put together. All four of those codes. And I think there's a different name for all four of those put together, but, and probably go back, and Weston will text me the right answer, but, um...
So when the agenda says states residential building codes, you're referring to the four parts?
Yes, yep. The how, or, you know, what to build, and then the structural, electrical, and mechanical.
And those four parts are under the, can we, can we refer to them that was in the state code, of course?
Yes, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe it's structural, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical, I'm not for sure, but still.
Is that a thousand pages total, or is it 4,000 pages?
It might be 4,000 pages, they're really...
And what would the property committee be looking for, really, about height?
Well, that's why, that's why I wanted to bring it up, before one of the committees, um, you know, volunteered. Because that's kind of my question is, you know, what exactly do you want answered?
Right.
Um, regarding this. I understand the fee structure...
The residential building codes, the international residential building codes? I don't feel like you are.
We can't change it.
Say that again?
You can't cha, yeah, you can't change the international residential building code.
It wouldn't be the international building code anymore if we made any changes.
Right.
But we could have, we could have, uh, a team focus on it and give us a recommendation. I'm not suggesting they're gonna read 4,000 pages, but there'll probably be more than all of us as a council.
We won't read 4,000.
Yeah, that's right.
Because we are on the property.
The audio is really boring.
Look at AI tell you it.
I feel like John has something to say.
We had a discussion about this when Myron Gookin was on the council, because I remember Myron and I got in deep talking about it. Uh, and when we were talking about it, at the time, it seemed like the best way for us to proceed, considering we didn't have an in-house, uh, Department of Inspection, uh, was to adopt parts of it by reference. Uh, and that's basically what the state has done right now. Each of these different divisions, uh, adopts the particular international code that applies to them, and then when you filter it down to the communities, we get them for things where they're the default, where we don't have that capacity to, uh, rank it ourselves. And an example of something where we've had all of them involved is, you know, if Weston was here, he'd elaborate more, but the Penny Lane building that we've been focused on, um, we had a situation with faulty wiring all through the building, and we ended up defaulting to, uh, the state electrical inspector. Uh, the, uh, plumbing, uh, division, uh, we defaulted to them as far as questions we had about that over there. We also defaulted to, uh, the structural, when we were talking about the three-story peaked roof. Uh, and, um, the, the state itself, uh, like you've been discussing, they're understaffed. Uh, the legislature hasn't been adding more people to these departments. They've been not renewing some of the things in those departments, because, um, less government is more popular right now. So, um, anyway, that, uh, being said, um, I'm sure you don't wanna hear history from me for too long on this, but, um, in the 90s, we compromised to get, uh, the rental habitability code that we have, and that's been a, uh, non-argument for about the last 20 out of the 30 years since we adopted it. But there are also some things that the public, I think, believed when we did the rental code, is that we weren't going after residential. Uh, so we're probably gonna have to discuss that, and cross that bridge, and figure out that at this point, our housing survey explains that we've got a lot of substandard housing, uh, and what we have right now for enforceable ordinances doesn't reach it all. Uh, that's the best explanation we can give the public on residential. Uh, the commercial and industrial, I think we're gonna have the same pushback on that if we evolve into that, and that is that some of the bigger, um, employers in the community will probably say they have better staff and are better equipped to deal with their internal inspections at their own plants than we can provide them. And if not, they'll default to the state, and they do default to the state on OSHA and other things. So, um, it's, it is, it is an area where we've, we've got a hole. Um, I don't know if, after this committee looks it over, um, I think Tom's right that we could be spending a lot of time, uh, getting into the specifics of the codes. Uh, at the same time, uh, I know Myron and I concluded back when we looked at this 15 years ago that, uh, probably, uh, our best course might be to just selectively adopt parts of it by reference and go forward without, uh, having our own. Uh, but at this point, we're, we're a new age, so to speak, I guess I'd say, as far as things coming out of our housing study, so, you know, have at it. But the thing is, I think we may still end up resolving to just adopt parts of it without going the whole show. And I think we'll still, uh, have an improved code if we adopt parts of it by reference. Uh, and the other thing is, we got some pieces of this that I don't think are complete yet in the international code. And I haven't been to a seminar on this in years, but every once in a while, they'll throw somebody at us at the municipal, um, annual seminar for attorneys. And the, the situations are that, uh, just like we receive, um, new twists from Melanie every once in a while, we'll have a discussion about grandparents' houses or mother-in-law's cottages on the same grounds, if we can do it. We've had that discussion before. We've had tiny home discussions and so forth, but we haven't built them into our ordinances yet. And we don't have a condominium ordinance. So there, there are some other things that, uh, when we study this, uh, and we look at it as a residential question, um, all of those things fit, too, but they're all new concepts, and some of them are incompatible with everything in our present code as far as the way we zone residential. So that's the other thing we gotta consider, is you got a population that are private, single-family residential predominantly, that probably have a certain, what I would call detrimental reliance. They bought the house thinking, well, we're in an R2 or an R1 neighborhood, and this all applies, and they might have been given two or three pages from an attorney in a title opinion or something that said, yeah, that's, that's what you got to work with. Uh, but at this point, uh, if we change up on them and we add a few other things that could show up in the backyard down the block, um, tiny home, minor subdivision, or something like that, uh, it's gonna be a new discussion that you have with people at the podium as far as, you know, they, they didn't see that coming. So I think there's probably a way to lay some of this out. Fortunately, we have, um, YouTube broadcasts and things like that, so that we explain different paths we're going down, because we got a half a dozen new ones.
Yeah.
Uh, and so, you know, enough said, but it, it's, it's an evolving process yet.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, go ahead, Ed.
Just one very quick comment. Yeah, John is right, the, the selecting important parts of the Iowa code would be one way to go. I think the other thing I just recommend to study, as opposed to the whole thousand pages, is what are on the list of inspections that these other cities are doing, and how they arrived at those different elements, because it's generally a two-page inspection sheet that they're doing for each one. So it's a very selective list of things that they're looking for, uh, and, um, and inspecting at that time.
Okay. Good points.
Is Weston currently a full-time employee?
Okay, so maybe, uh...
This isn't, I mean, this isn't a small job, I guess, to put on an existing employee that is already full-time. So, just something to think about.
Nope, I mean, it's a fair, that's a fair statement.
I mean, well, it would just be, like, building co, obviously, they wouldn't be retroactive, so it would be if you're building new construction, or if you're doing a certain amount of renovation to an existing structure, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that in the code, or does that have to be redesigned?
Which part?
Is it in the national code? Or do we decide at what point codes would kick in?
I think both.
Yeah, I would say both. And, yeah. Okay, so we've got one minute, if not till our meeting, so I think we'll stop there. And, um, I can bring it up in the mayor's report, and then we wanna move it to property. Somebody can make that motion at that time. Okay? So with that... With that. To order? Thank you. If you will, please call the roll. Ham?
Here.
Tohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, great. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to add a discussion item. It's the sustainability coordinator's position.
Should we put that under committee and board reports? I think that's.
Sure.
Okay. Nothing else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of February 10th, 2025 council meeting. Approval of the February 14th, 2025 payroll in the amount of $161,234.53. Acceptance of volunteer center committee minutes, acceptance of beautification commission minutes, resolution of employment in the police department, approval of liquor license for university BP Walmart store number 985 and quality Quick Stop, approval of ACH payment, Department of Revenue, in the amount of $4,503.75, approval of total claims in the amount of $350,158.71, and claims more than $75,000 R2 EBS for our insurance premiums of $83,996.96.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion?
I did review the claims and they seemed in order.
Okay.
I was just curious about this miscellaneous expense to Midwest One Bank.
I feel like that's still the credit card.
Okay.
It is, okay.
Okay, and it's just, okay.
I could be wrong. But I asked that question once too.
Okay.
No, that's exactly what it is.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Approved unanimously. Under public form and appearances, we have Lindsay Bauer from the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center about the Farm Show street closure.
Good evening, everyone. I believe you have the map of the proposed street closure in your attachments. This is an annual thing. This is the 10th annual Southeast Iowa Farm Show, if you can believe that. And I barely got my request in on time.
Is this a little early?
Nope, nope. First Saturday in March. I mean, it's early in that the first Saturday in March is the first day of March, but, but yeah, we're always this weekend.
I would move to approve the street closure for the Farm Show.
Second.
Okay, moved by Kness, second by Gandy. Any other, further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you, good luck.
Thank you all.
Hope it's good attendance. Next is Terry Baker of CBB Convention and Visitors Bureau for her budget presentation.
Good evening, counsel. You have in front of you two reports. One is our mid-year impact report, which I am not going to go over in detail. However, I'm going to point out a couple of little highlights. First of all is that we received our research or data collection for 2023 tourism data, and Jefferson County had an increase of almost 15% in direct visitor spending in 2023. We were the second highest county in the state in terms of increase, which is really, really great news for us, and we're really excited about that. We saw an increase across the board with lodging, food and beverage, transportation, and retail spending. So that was really exciting. And the other highlight piece is that I recently received a certification from the International Inbound Travel Association, which means I will start working with international travel groups to draw them into Fairfield. So it's an effort with the state of Iowa and about 10 communities were certified and will be attending some trade shows and talking to international travel guides and travel tour groups to bring people, first of all, as groups, and then second of all, as individuals looking to spend their vacations in the United States. So that will probably not see some results in that until 2026, 2027, but it's a really exciting new change for us. The other piece you have is our proposed marketing plan and budget. You can see here, this, we, we kept it pretty much on the same level as what we've done year from year. However, the big difference is that we now have a little more research and data, so we know where people are coming from and where we would like to get people to come from. So we know that what's happening in the community surrounding us, and so we know we have opportunities to bring more people in from those areas and attract them to make that little extra effort to come into Fairfield. So our basic marketing targets digitally, print, we have different methods that we're using there. I tried to give you a breakdown as much as possible so you can see what we're doing, how we're doing it, what our anticipation is for our new plan coming up, and how we're going to tell that story and make Fairfield seem attractive to the people who are looking for what we offer. So if you have any questions, I will be able to entertain those now, otherwise, give me a call.
Okay, any questions, counsel, for Terry?
Nice report.
Yeah. Glad you liked it.
15%. That's impressive.
I was very happy to see that. Awesome, thank you so much.
Great, okay, so we will move on. Our first action item is consideration of the 2025 bridge inspection and load rating agreement. Melanie is going to talk about this.
Okay. So the first item is an agreement with Hahoon Burns Associates for $2,550 for the inspection of the B Street Culvert, Crow Creek Bridge, sure hope it passes, and the Walton Bridge, as well as the D Street Culvert. All of these bridges, the, three of them, bridges and culverts, three of them are required by FHWA to be inspected every two years. The D Street Culvert does not, but it is on our radar. It's not large enough to be required by FHWA, but it's large enough that it will be difficult for, I mean, it needs to be on our radar to make sure we have enough funds available to replace it when it gets to that point.
Is that at the country hall?
Yeah, yeah. It's just a little, I believe it's based off of the drainage area that determines whether it's required by FHWA to be inspected or not, and so it's just a little bit smaller. And then something new that makes this just a little bit more expensive than years in the past, and this really doesn't apply to cities because our bridges and culverts are much larger, but they require it of everything, is to make sure all of our emergency vehicles can go over the bridges and culverts. I mean, you think of like county bridges and things, that's really where they're trying to check to make sure all of the bridges are wide enough and can hold all emergency vehicles that operate within the district. So they will check all of the, those four structures for that. It is a budgeted item, so recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Moved by Estee?
Second.
Second by Kness. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Estee?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, next action item, consideration of construction staking, construction material testing, and special structural inspection support services for the new fire station.
Yep, that pretty much sums it up. It is, it is in an amount of $70,000, which is actually a little less than what we had put in the budget for the fire station. Typically, in our projects, we will pay a company to do the design work and then have them available on hand to inspect that work to make sure that they didn't send over the wrong plans or that the contractor isn't using the as-for-construction set, not the final set after addendums have been issued. We were actually discussing that during the meeting, that the contractor had that happen where his crews were using the wrong one and the foreman caught it before they started pouring concrete. So, so they come in during those points that we were just talking about, during the building code, they come in during the footings, they do geotechnical testing, masonry check, the precast concrete before, before it gets placed, steel bolt connections, and then the fireproofing areas. And then there's also construction speaking that Prince Renninger will provide, making sure that the building's at the right elevation so that the slopes between the fire station and the streets are right angle and other drainage things, getting all of those elevations correct.
And move to approve.
Moved by Kness?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any questions?
The one thing I'll add is if there is retesting or the contractor wipes out all of the construction stakes, they are responsible for that retesting, not necessarily the city. So, and that's in there, that is in their construction contract.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded again to move forward on the consideration of construction staking and material testing, et cetera, for the fire station. Okay. No further questions, please call the roll. Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you, approved unanimously. Our next item is consideration to enter into a joint agreement with Jefferson County, Iowa, for the Sunrise Trail urban renewal area. Do you want to talk about that? I mean, you have anything to say about that?
Well, we're trying to get the deal done, and we are required to, this is the first step into getting the Sunrise Trail subdivision annexed into the city, and we had been working with the county for several, I want to say several weeks, it feels like months, back and forth, back and forth. Their primary concern is creating an island with the Moston Barns and protecting that, which we have brought a resolution to counsel. And they, we had a meeting this morning, and they are wanting to pass the agreement. However, it's contingent with the county conservation, turning Moston Barns into a county park to preserve it in perpetuity, which I think is great, but that meeting will be held on Wednesday. And all this will do is prolong, so that's kind of where we're at now, is we need to enter into the agreement, so do they. So we're still working on that, but this is the first step.
Yeah, so this is our side. So I would entertain a motion to move this forward.
So can we enter into it? That was my question. The county has made their acceptance of it contingent. Can we enter into it contingent?
It wouldn't have to be contingent.
It's not contingent on anything.
Yeah.
We enter into it, okay. Oh, no, never mind.
So is there a motion to move it forward?
Move to approve.
Okay, moved by Kness.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any further discussion? Now, please call the roll. Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Estee?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain just because I don't want there to be any implication of any kind of conflict. I don't think there is, but just, you know.
Okay, great, thank you. Is that everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so that was approved with one abstention. Okay, next action item, this is consideration to set a public hearing for fiscal year '26 proposed property tax levy. Now, we have two choices on here. I'd like to set Monday, March 31st, 2025, at noon for this meeting. If we set it for April, then our next meeting, we would be passing it, and we only got three days cushion, so I think this gives us a little bit, a little more cushion room and...
Cushion for what?
Anything that might come up during budget hearings.
Has to be submitted by a certain date.
Can we not do it at the council meeting on the 24th? Is that too soon?
Correct, it can't be earlier than the 25th. Just by one day we missed it.
It has to be submitted at what date?
By the end of April.
By the end of April.
And this has to be separate from a regular council meeting?
Correct, it can be the only thing in legend.
So I would make the recommendation or motion to schedule this public hearing for Monday, March 31st, 2025, at 12:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Flornoy. Second by Estee. Any further discussion? Now, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Okay, next item is a set of public hearing for the nuisance abatement schedule assessments. That public hearing is set for Monday. We'd like to set it for Monday, March 24th, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
Do, is that where we just go through what the abatements are? Nuisance abatements?
It's the nuisance, the, if we have not received payment by then, we would be assessing it to our taxes then, yeah.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Kness, second by Flornoy. Any further discussion? Now, please call the roll. Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Next action item, consideration to set a public hearing for stop box curb stop repair schedule assessments, again, for Monday, March 24th, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
Move to set the public hearing for the stop box curb stop repair schedule assessments for Monday, March 24th.
Thank you, moved by Estee?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any further discussion?
Yes, what, can you give a little context of what this is?
A stop box repair is, we give property owners at least 30, if not 60, days to repair their stop boxes, otherwise, we will go do it for them and charge them for it. And if they have not paid, then we will assess that to their taxes also.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Now, please call the roll. Estee?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, approved unanimously. Next action item, consideration to set a public hearing for plan specification, form of contract, and engineer's estimate for the Walton Club Golf Bridge project for Monday, March 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM.
Oh, 2025, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, right. I just completely read that and didn't blink an eye, right? 2025. And, yeah, you want to just say a little bit about this?
Yep, good evening, counsel. This is for replacement of the golf cart bridge at the Walton Club, and we're replacing that with the pipe and culverts that we decided on. The, this is to set the public hearing for that project. It got changed from a quotation project to a bidding project due to the bidding laws being changed last fall. Culverts got changed from being a vertical infrastructure to a horizontal infrastructure, so the bidding requirements got changed from, I think it was around $200,000 down to $70,000. So anything above $70,000 has to be required public bid. So that's why we're setting a public hearing to go out public, for public bids for this project. And I'm, did I state bids will be due March 20th, and then I'll bring them for council consideration on March 24th. And I'm here to answer any questions about that project.
Still, still expected to be about $140,000?
It's, it's around, it's around $200,000. I think the estimate was more closer to $185,000. It's a little bit, we added some head walls onto that project because we didn't want those pipes to float up, so it added a little bit more cost to that project, but it's, the estimate's $200,000 right now.
And it would be completed?
The completion date is September 30th of, of this year. Yep, and then we're going to have it in the specifications that the contractor... Yep, and then we're going to have it in the specifications that the contractor, if, once they start work, they must continue work. So, they can't just start and stop. So, that way, we, if we draw down, when we draw down the leg, you don't have to draw it down more than once, you draw it down once and you're done.
Okay, great. Okay, so again, we need a motion to set the public hearing for Monday, March tenth, twenty-twenty-five, seven P.M.
So, moved?
A move by Hamm?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any questions? Please call the roll. Hamm?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Okay, next is a public hearing on the matter of amending and restating Fairfield's commercial industrial residential urban revitalization program. The next item really is the resolution, and we are updating our program per state code. Melanie, do you want to say any detail about this particularly? Before I open the public hearing? So, yeah, I think it would be great if you just explained a little bit, some of the new updates in here.
Yeah, so, I'll go through the updates. At the very bottom of the agenda, under the project update, is the total of the tax abatements that were received in twenty-twenty-four that was asked for at the last meeting. But during, what is being proposed is updating the residential from three years to five years. This is the max that is allowed by state law. It is a hundred percent of the first seventy-five thousand that is of increased valuation on the commercial. It is a hundred percent of the increased valuation for three years, and, or, commercial and industrial, excuse me. And then multifamily, which doesn't really exist, but as I told the people at the housing conference, that's the best way to describe it, it's three or more, more units. And it is a hundred percent for ten years. Do you see back to the agenda? The item below it on the agenda, sorry. Nope, all the way, go all the way down to the bottom of the agenda. Sorry, keep going.
Oh, that one, okay, sorry, that's this one.
Yeah. So, there was only eight approved, or, eight applications total in twenty-twenty-four, and two of the eight were denied because they did not increase the valuation by more than ten percent. Something that is always a big controversy in Fairfield is whether new siting increases your tax valuation. And as one applicant found out, it does not increase your tax valuation by more than ten percent. So, they did not get the tax payment.
Did it increase it at all?
The taxes did go up, I don't know if it was due to the work that they did.
Just like a roof, I mean, some people claim that a new roof will cause your taxes to go up because it'd be revalued. But I don't believe that that's probably the case, is it?
And having grown up on a farm, I always say that the reason why your taxes go up is because there was probably something that you weren't being charged for before, and it's because the assessor came out and found it, and that you weren't being charged. But, but growing up on a farm where you always had lots of little buildings, and that's the way it works.
Okay, with that quick update, I'll open the public hearing, does anybody want to speak to this particular issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the resolution. Again, this is the consideration of amending and restating Fairfield's commercial industrial and residential urban revitalization program. So, is there a motion to approve?
So, moved?
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Caness. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Great, thank you, approved unanimously. Next resolution, consideration to authorize grant application on behalf of the city of Fairfield. This is so that we can send a grant to Washington County Riverboat Grant. And
So moved.
For the fire station.
Yep, yeah, for the fire station. Moved by Caness?
Second.
Second by Esti. Any discussion?
We've applied for this before, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Many times.
Yeah, is this the third time?
This is four times.
Four times, okay.
Four times is a charm.
Well, let's see if we can't get, get lucky, right? Okay, no other questions, please call, please call the roll. Caness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Next is a resolution, a consideration of tax abatement application for one thousand four West Grimes Avenue. This is a Don Holting property, and Don's here, want to thank Don, because he's got another one, for rehabbing homes that dearly needed it. And so, again, this is a tax abatement application for one thousand four West Grimes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Caness, second by Flornoy, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Caness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next resolution, again, tax abatement application for eleven hundred West Hempstead.
Move to approve.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Esti. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Roe? Caness?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, the next resolution will be in one motion per our attorneys. So, this is consideration of determining the necessity and setting dates of a consultation and a public hearing on a proposed Sunrise Trail urban renewal plan for a proposed urban renewal area for the city of Fairfield, the consultation meeting being Tuesday, March fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at ten A.M., and the public hearing being March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven P.M. So, basically, this is establishing the urban renewal area for the proposed Sunrise Trail.
Do you need counsel present for the consultation meeting?
No, Doug Reiner will be here.
Okay, I'd move to approve.
Move by Caness?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion?
Yes, what is a consultation meeting, what takes place?
They typically, I'm here, and they'll come in and ask questions, the public, the general public, if they have questions.
And we put special invitations out for the county and the school district, in case they want to have any questions or have any concerns about the TIF agreement.
I see, thank you.
Is the hospital getting invited too?
Nope.
No? Okay. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, so any other questions? No, please call the roll.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Under the mayor's report, I'll just start out with, for those who might not have watched our work session, we were talking about residential building codes, and the need for those to move forward in our community. We are one of the last cities in Iowa that do not have them. And our thriving communities application, which is due May fifteenth, we want to show a good faith effort that we're moving down this road, and so, we're going to look at this much more closely. And we're looking at fee structure, not only the codes, but look at fee structure, come up with a timeline for code enforcement, and what that would look like. And we'll look at what inspections other cities are doing. And, and along with that, our legal counsel has also mentioned, we don't have a condo policy, ADUs, tiny homes, so those are all things that, you know, could come up, and so we'll probably be discussing those as well. And so, we did discuss possibly sending this to committee. So, would you like to push it, make a motion to take it to property committee?
Yes, I like to push it, I mean, make a motion.
Sorry, I shouldn't have used that word.
I move that the consideration of the international residential building codes, which is part of our session meeting this evening, be referred to the property committee for review and recommendation to the council.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second by Caness. And Doug is thrilled, right?
I would assign it to Paul for a report.
Yeah, we'll give him some reading.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, save side, great, thank you. Property committee has, it's the ball, is in your court.
Because the thriving communities grant depends on this. Is there a set date, you wanted something back from us? I presume you would.
Well, I think we have to definitely show that we're going down this road, so as much as we can get done, I think by May fifteenth.
Okay.
Plenty of time.
I mean, if, even if we could get it to, I don't know if we can get it to a first
Reading.
ordinance, first reading, that might be a stretch, but
Is Melanie going to give us hard copies?
Let me ask our city attorney, if we, if we went by the tactic strategy of adopting by reference certain parts of the international residential building code, well, how, not, I'm just curious, some timeline, how quickly could we move? And still have a chance to review this.
Same reading scheduled, two or three readings, maybe waive one. We did that with the building maintenance code, it makes reference back to certain parts of the other building codes that are broader. So, every once in a while, we'll adopt something by reference, so yes. Just include it in what your draft is, and then go through your three readings.
There's only one council meeting before March fifteenth, though.
May fifteenth.
Oh, May fifteenth.
Did I say March, I'm sorry. May fifteenth, if I said March, I apologize.
No, that's what my brain
Yep, no, yeah, I can, I can hear the panic, right? Yeah, no, May fifteenth.
Is there any intention or desire on the part of the council to hold a public hearing like we did last time when we considered building codes?
Oh, you had to ask that question?
I know.
Well, why don't you talk about it?
Are committee meetings public?
They are, but we had a special meeting just for builders and industrial people and
I would say yes, but I don't think we're anywhere near that point yet.
Well, if we're adopting them later this spring.
Maybe we should figure out what we're adopting first.
Okay, that's just something to think about, we don't decide tonight, but
Yeah.
I, I think if we didn't do that, it would look very bad. People would not be happy with us.
Well, they have potentially three readings too, so. We'll leave that up to the committee whether they want to do that.
Okay.
Alrighty, so, I just wanted to, very quickly, I gave you, just for transparency, the emergency management budget, and the highlights there, really, just for reference, is a three and a half percent cost of living raise for Brett. The one addition that we added was fifteen thousand for generators. As you know, we're doing it two dollar per capita, and the levy from emergency management is six point, six point nine seven cents. It's a little bit less than last year, but it raises the same amount of dollars. So, that's the emergency management, any questions on that? It's pretty basic. And then the conference board is the assessor's office, and I gave you the levy rates, it's a little bit less than last year. Last year, it was fifty cents. This coming year, it's going to be forty-eight and a half cents, basically. And again, pretty much the same, as far as budget, there's nothing really outstanding or different. This does include a five percent raise for those employees in that office. So, again, the taxing bodies, you know, the mayors, the schools, all make up that conference board, and they go and vote on that, so again, I'm just sharing kind of what that looks like. And that is all I have under the mayor's report. City attorney?
Yes, I've got a few things. First of all, I want to mention, we lost a couple friends in the last week, and everybody probably knew Dave Heaton at some point historically. Dave was a champion for mental health in southern Iowa, and he invited members of my profession to go to hearings in Des Moines to try to keep the juvenile ward from being removed from this quadrant of the state. And then the same story about fifteen years later, as far as removing the mental health facility itself from this part of the state. And he was right about it both times, but we don't have it now, so we're stuck with community-based TV screen counseling is what it amounts to. Jeff Voorhees was the other person that passed, I don't know how many of you might have heard of Jeff or remembered him, but we have a group of apartment buildings that were a CDBG project about twenty-five years ago called Monroe Park, over by our in-town daycare center over by Seventh and Monroe. And Jeff was an architect from Des Moines that did these kinds of things, low to moderate income housing, and also came down here and helped us structure the CDBG buyouts for the neighborhood dilapidated housing, and basically changed the nature of about a two-block area down there so that we have nice, low to moderate income Monroe Park apartments. And it was sort of a model for the area for a while, but Jeff died last week, so he was an old man. Hate to see people like that go, but he did our community a lot of good twenty-five years ago. I want to mention a couple things that are going on right now that I try to keep track of. There, there are different things that right now are sort of part of a political purge. I don't want to get into Washington, D.C. very deeply, but they stopped appointing people to some groups like the NLRB. Another one of those boards is the National Federal Contract Arbitration Panel. And that group handles things that affect us. I was afraid they didn't have anybody left just over the course of the last month, but then they came out with a ruling in the last seven days where they favorably found an appeal taken by a neighbor city to Storm Lake after FEMA basically withheld funds for seven and a half million dollar repair project out there where a dam was washed out with flooding. That's the kind of thing that can impact us directly. We're just as entitled to use federal Title XVII Administrative Procedure Act arbitration situations like this if we get denied sometime, maybe on a grant payment that we'd be entitled to. So, that being said, I'm not going to spend any more time on it there. Also, I notice around the state that two other towns, we're all feeling the crunch, but two of the metro areas have reduced their services for public transit. For instance, Fort Dodge doesn't have bus service for a while now. That is something that I grew up being used to trolleys and buses, so I, I notice it when they cut it. I want to report to you a couple things that are going on with our city cases right now. I believe March tenth, we're going to be talking about fifty-five to fifty-seven North Court, which is the Penny Lane Building. And that's been ongoing for a while, but there are right now some things being done that are title searches related to the, the ownership certificate, lien searches in the Secretary of State's office, and local lien searches. You may wonder why that's important, well, we, we have another house right now that's in the process of bids for demolition on March sixth. I just got those reports from the abstract company today on that site, and turned out that there's a judgment lien against the property. That goes personally against the person that's the owner of the property, and we can get around that. We've got another problem, though, the property also has a tax sale certificate outstanding on it. He didn't pay his taxes last year, so it was sold for a certificate to a company in Newark, New Jersey. We'll be communicating with them, but I didn't know that was the situation until pretty much right now. We aren't going to have a contract We aren't going to have a contractor let a bid on the place to demolish it while there's a tax certificate out. The tax certificate only shows about nine hundred and ninety-six dollars of tax for the amount that it takes to redeem the certificate. But we're probably going to have to talk about that and take it to committee and probably talk it over with administration here about how we want to deal with that. And we can do the bidding with the bid letters on March sixth, subject to it getting fixed.
Can't we ask the supervisors to abate that and cancel the tax sale certificate?
That's the other thing we can do, yeah. So, and Weston and I have been talking about bringing you an ordinance that might, if the Board of Supervisors are inclined to do so, just let us off the hook on these things when this kind of abatement situation comes up. But unfortunately, I've been in three other counties doing different things like this with small towns. And the Board of Supervisors aren't always favorably disposed to abate it. So it's one of those things, if we had an understanding generally with them, and maybe an ordinance on the county side, maybe that'll solve our problem. But for this one, it is a problem before we go ahead and demolish.
Is this on South D Street?
Yes. And the gentleman involved in this also has been representing to Weston that he had people interested in the site and that maybe we weren't going to have to go through the hoops for the rest of this, but he's been ghosting Weston for about the last three weeks and Weston can't find him to talk to. So he may well be in California for all we know right now, but anyway, that's, that's something going on over on South D Street, close to Washington School. We want to get the house either remediated or removed. There's another situation with a Mr. Cox who had a fire damaged house who we had in court. And he agreed that it would be raised, cleared, and that there would be some things done to make the lot tidy. Those things were done with the help of a city crew. We certified our cost to the magistrate. The magistrate wasn't sure whether to set it as a restitution hearing or as a hearing just on the amount of the cost certified. They're under the magistrate's jurisdictional amount by about half. I mean, there's about thirty-five hundred dollars. But Mr. Cox doesn't want to pay now that it's cleaned up. So we will probably be having a hearing on that. And the magistrate will have to decide whether he's going to assess it as restitution along with the fines or if he's going to treat it as something we can either take a judgment and sell the lot or treat it as tax assessment and collect it through the fall tax payment. But other than that, the only other thing I've got for you is dogs. And our thirty-six dogs in residence down on South or East Buchanan, thirty-two of them now live outside the county. We had a hearing about that when their attorney was available last week. Two of the three defendants involved in that case now live outside of the county and have medical healthcare positions. The judge felt that our ordinance only entitled us to hundred-dollar fines, which actually is what we adopted under our dog number ordinance. The recommendation of the Animal Control and View Board was that we kept the fines low because, quote, "They're only animals." But the judge also required the cleanup of the lot that is pretty rancid down on East Buchanan. And said basically that the people were all asking because of their healthcare licenses for what we call deferred judgments. Judge said he would consider doing that, provided that they get this place cleaned up to the city's satisfaction by summertime. So between now and mid-June, they are supposed to be cleaning that yard. The defense attorney indicated that their solution so far is some chemicals they're going to add. Our argument back was, we had this looked at by landscapers before. They think we're going to have to basically skidload and remove layers of topsoil and probably replace that with something of substance. I don't know how that's going to shake out now, but we'll probably have a midway report in late March or April, assuming that it's not terribly rainy and terribly swampy.
Is anyone living in the house now?
Yes, there's still, the person that owns the house still is.
It's still there, okay.
And she's got two animals, so. Anyway, we're back, we're back to compliance with our numbers ordinance. We're back to probably not the type of continuing creation of stench that we had previously, but it's still going to take more work. And that, we'll keep you updated on it.
Great, thanks.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Committee and Board reports ways and means.
Ways and Means met on Thursday, Friday, and today to discuss the, the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. We have three things to discuss, I guess, just to run by you tonight. Everybody has a copy of the budget, is that right? Yes, okay. We have three things to discuss there, just to run by you tonight. I am going to refer to Rebecca here on the first one because I don't have my pad. I have my iPhone and I can't see the, the print on one of these. So the property tax levy, I don't, I didn't make handwritten notes on that one. If you'd like to.
Seventeen point six five.
Seventeen point six five, thank you. So the proposed property tax levy for this, for the fiscal budget will be seventeen point six five percent, which is up from.
Sixteen, it's up.
I know, I had this on.
I think it's up ninety-seven cents.
Ninety-seven cents.
Sixteen sixty-eight.
Sixteen sixty-eight, thank you.
So it's up a dollar three. No, I'm sorry, up ninety-seven cents.
Ninety-seven cents, there you go. Okay. The second one we're going to discuss tonight is revenues, revenues memo. And we have four items on there to discuss. The first one is the compost site. If we're recommending that on the outsourcing of the compost site and to fund this, we'll need to generate about thirty-four thousand two hundred a year. Rather than do fees and stuff at the site, what we're looking at is an increase of eighty cents per month on the water bill for residential accounts only. Since the compost site will be limited to residential members of the community, they'll be the only ones that the, the water bill will affect. This will be about three thousand six hundred and thirteen accounts roughly. And we'd like to recommend to council that we adopt this, this fee change on the, on the water bill. Go ahead and make a motion tonight and put this through.
We would write an ordinance.
An ordinance, okay, all right. The second one would be a motion to increase the park and rec membership by ten percent. And then we would eliminate the membership between the, the indoor pool and the gym, which would just be one membership now. And then we would still maintain the outdoor membership pool, the outdoor pool membership as, as we have in the past. And this is all spelled out in the memo that you guys will have in your, that you have in your budget. The third one that we looked at is the peddler licensing. Currently, I believe it's, we have it down to one dollar a day that you can get a peddler's license. So if Chick-fil-A comes to town, then you have to stop in here and get a peddler's license for one dollar, which is more paperwork than, than what it generates. So we're looking at changing that to two options on the license. The smallest one would be twenty-five dollars a week or a hundred and twenty-five dollars for six months. So those would be the two options available for a peddler's license in town. And the third one we looked at would be on the waste management side of it. We're looking at raising the rate on, for commercial accounts from three to six for a total of nine dollars and raising the rates on residential by five dollars total between solid waste and recycling, which would put it from, would put it at twenty-two thirty-three. And this will also help cover the, the new contract that we have with waste management then.
Can you mention the escalator rate?
I didn't, and I didn't write that down.
It's four percent.
Four percent, thank you.
No.
That's what we included.
Oh, that's what you included, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Contract costs are three point five, but.
Got it.
Sentimental four.
Got it.
Yep, yep, thank you.
What's for, what's the escalator for what?
Every year you would add four percent to the bill to cover the increased cost from waste management because they have an escalator of three and a half percent.
So, Tom, again, of the commercial accounts, three dollars per month additional, is that what you said?
Yes. Right?
No. Six.
We're changing it from three to six, up to nine. It's going to be at nine dollars.
Okay.
So, sorry.
May I ask for the compost site? I know that at one point when we discussed it, I was asking if you guys could look into us covering some of the cost of that outsourcing to the contractor. I don't know if that was something that you guys discussed. If there was a way for us to cover any portion of that instead of passing it all on to residents.
The department's cut so much already and we were covering the cost of the compost pile with road use tax funds, which can't, I mean, we can't divert that to someone else. So, no, we did not.
Oh, okay.
I, I guess I really should have started this whole, this whole presentation with, number one, thanking Mel and Rebecca and Doug for the work they put into this to begin with because it made it much easier this year.
Yeah, this year was way easier.
It still took a lot of time, but it made the whole process much easier. And they put in an incredible amount of work before we, we even sat down and, and looked at this the first time. And the second one will be the department heads because we had very little pushback from what we asked them to do. And we asked them to do a lot this time. And they, they helped us out and just agreed to almost everything we asked, so.
And the two.
And it wasn't easy for them either. They, they took some serious cuts in the departments this year, so.
And I would just add, two of the biggest things is we're spending down like two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in fund balance in water.
Yes.
And another.
Twenty-nine, thirty thousand?
Twenty-nine thousand in wastewater. So while our budget's balanced, we are spending dollars that are just sitting there. So that, I felt like that was worth noting to you all.
And, and this will be the second year in a row that the proposed budget we're, we're putting in front of you is a balanced budget. So we're not looking for anything additional this year going into it, so. The third thing that we had on the list would be the lost applications. And I don't know, you, you probably don't have a copy of this to put up there yet, so I'm not sure.
It is up.
It has the, the amounts that we decided on.
Okay, all right. If you can open that one, Jason.
Go down to the lost local option sales tax. Yep, yeah.
Great, there we go, thank you. All right. We have the two different sections in this. We have the above the line or the ongoing ones that we try to maintain every year. And then we have the grant applications on the bottom, or the lost funds applications on the bottom. The top ones, there's not a lot of change to what the, what we had in there as the proposed. There'll be seventy-five thousand dollars for a new police car, which we replace one each year. There's a fifteen hundred for City Hall, which covers the Christmas luncheon for all of the employees. The residential code and training and the mayor and council conferences are three thousand apiece for a total of six thousand. Fire department gear, which is PPE equipment, we have three thousand in there. We're, we're leaving that in there, but we're going to look and see if possibly the, one of the servants agencies would like to step in and, and help us out with that one. The third one is the fireworks budget, which we was, we had it sixty-five hundred and we changed to five thousand. Been down to library, needs a new gutter system for the library. They're having some roof issues now. It's something that's probably needed done prior than, than what we're looking at now. They asked for thirty thousand. We're looking at funding seventy-five percent of that project and letting them either go through the foundation or, or come up with the other twenty-five percent. The original ask was thirty thousand, we're looking at twenty-two thousand five hundred on that one. The park and rec locker room flooring and equipment. We replace two pieces of equipment every year in the rec center, whether it be treadmills or weight machines or something, which is, I believe, fifteen thousand of this. And the remaining fifty-five thousand of this is the locker room flooring, which we've had issues with since the day it was put in. This will be a new system, a new floor, the same as what we have around the.
Pool deck.
Indoor pool. So, and that's, that will come to seventy thousand. We left that one as, as needed. The third one was a park and rec playground equipment request for thirty thousand. We, between private donations and some very generous benefactors in town and the city, we have upgraded five playgrounds, I believe, in the last three years. I might have the timeline wrong, but within, I think, believing the last three years. We decided to forego that one this year on the playground equipment and change it to a thirty thousand dollar request for a cleaning service in the park and rec, in the rec building, rec center. We don't have that right now. That falls mostly on the employees in there to, mainly Calvin, that does a lot of the cleaning and the house and everything when he gets a sec. We're looking at having them look at three times a week service, maybe a Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We, we did budget thirty thousand for that, which is greatly needed in there. With the amount of traffic and everything that goes through there now and events and everything like that, that, that there has to be something in addition to our director in there cleaning the bathrooms when he gets a sec, so. The next one was the beautification commission, which requested twelve thousand five hundred. We agreed to eleven thousand five hundred. A thousand of that request was for private property, which this, it can't be included on this. So we, we eliminated a thousand requests for that one and, and put that one at eleven five. Carnegie Museum HVAC system, twenty thousand. We agreed to go ahead with that one, which is a, a needed expense there. The next one was Carnegie contractual services. This was a request that we asked them to take a look at. They came back with eleven, they didn't really eliminate it. They came back still with eleven thousand twelve dollars, which they felt was much needed for contractual services and salaries, basically. We offered six thousand. That's not right.
Mm-hmm. Because we moved five thousand out of their engineering costs.
Moved five thousand out of their engineering costs, right.
We were able to decrease this then.
Yep, yep. So they don't have any major projects coming up this year, so we felt that the five thousand in the engineering cost probably wasn't going to be needed. So we're changing that to six thousand twelve dollars on the contractual services account.
That one, there was several of them we noted as just one year.
Yes.
It's not, yeah. Not a recurring expenditure.
I have written my notes here, one-year entry. So one year only on that. Even though it's an above the line thing, it won't be an ongoing one. Fairfield Media Center, thirteen thousand dollars for new.
Cameras.
Camera equipment. Excuse me. Which, which is something that's, I guess, past due from what we understand on that. Fairfield Arts and. Fairfield Arts and Convention Center Infrastructure, fifty thousand. We agreed on that one, although we're gonna look at the source of funding on that one in the future and see if there's a couple of other revenue streams that we might be able to use to help, help that one out. Grow Fairfield Economic Development, twenty-six thousand. We, we left as requested, and then the hundred thousand that we put away each year for a new fire truck. I believe the cost of a new ladder truck right now is one point eight million. So, at this rate, it would take eighteen years to, to raise enough just to, and by the time we got to eighteen years, it would be more than that. They, they recommend that you retire a truck after twenty years, and it's mandatory to retire a truck after twenty-five years. So, that fund won't get touched, we keep putting into that, and I, I have a suspicion that that'll have to increase here in the future. In addition to the hundred thousand. That, out of our five-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we budgeted for local option sales taxes this year. That will leave us a remaining one-hundred-and-ten-thousand four-eighty-eight to cover requests from various commissions and account, or groups. The first one was- See, I don't have my note, I have my total on here on this one. Yeah, it was fifty thousand for beautification committee, commission. And we- Terry, exactly what did we decide on that? I don't have it on my note here, I know that we-
Zero.
Yeah.
We, essentially, we determined that it hasn't been addressed how to, who's going to clean them, who's going to, you know, take care of them.
This is, this is the public restrooms up on the, on the square. So, the beautification, I, I think I remember most of this. The beautification committee asked us for a fifty thousand dollar grant to refurbish the bathrooms. They have come up with-
They'd apply for an art grant.
Forty, yeah.
For another fifty.
And, and public funding, and I think they had around forty thousand. They, they didn't have the total amount of what the, what they budgeted as the, the re, re, refurbishing of the, of the bathrooms. We felt like even with the fifty thousand dollar request from us, that it wouldn't be quite enough to do it. And it creates an ongoing expense and, and maintaining of the, of the bathrooms. We have three other avenues of what we could do with that building. A request for purchase, a, a refurbishing it into an office space. And if we just eliminate the building itself. It, it's been an ongoing thing, it's on our agenda every single year when we, when we look at this. I've lived in Fairfield, I think, almost twenty-five years, and I'm not sure they've been open since I've lived in town. And not, not joking, so it's, it's been something that's been sitting there for a long time that, that we just haven't done anything with. Our recommendation right now is to not move forward with repairing of the restrooms. With the vandalism that has occurred and the schedule of maintaining and when they would be open, when they wouldn't be open. Is something that's a little more daunting than, than what we think we can look at right now for, to lay that on another department in town. The next one was the Carnegie Museum Foundation, had a request for thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five. And-
For LED lighting?
For what?
LED lighting.
Yeah, LED lighting throughout the, the, the building. With agreeing to the other ones and the budget that they requested this year. That's one that we felt that they can either try to source fund themselves, or they're gonna have to put off for another time. So, we did eliminate that one also. The Conservation Foundation of Jefferson County. Was a fly fishing classes that they would like to do. This, this nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine ninety-two will support, I believe, eighteen fly fishing kits that they can use throughout this, through, for the class instruction. And unknown to me, yes, there is fly fishing in Iowa, I did not know that. So, this is something that they like to do and, and teach. Fairfield Productions, ten thousand. We kind of do this one each year, this is for the film series, and we thought that would be a good one to, to continue. The Fairfield Arbor Committee, we believe that one has already been-
Funded.
Funded. Then, so we're, we're looking into that, see if this is a separate request.
He did, but there's another round. It was a little confusing, cause I talked to him last night.
Okay.
Okay.
So, he is asking for another seven hundred.
But he wants that for this spring, which would be-
Too early, yeah.
So, the one that he's asking for would be on, wouldn't be on this budget, so.
That's true.
So, what he asked, the one that he asked for for this budget, he's already gotten, so. That's what kind of confused us, so this is for the next budget season, so. So, we didn't, we did not include that one.
Well, we can help him raise what he needs for the spring, I think.
So, okay. Fairfield Community Center, twelve thousand, we did agree to that one, although they have also been funded by the county in, in years past, which is, they're not. So, we're, we're looking to see if that can be something that's, that will be addressed. The seven forty-three sixty-five for Farmer's Market, there's a little plus sign next to that. What they would like to do is, I believe, on the east side of Howard Park, where the vendor set up, they would like to enlarge that sidewalk from four feet to eight feet. They will, they would like the city to do the forms and prep work for the concrete. The seven hundred and forty-three then will then-
Fifty-seven forty-three.
Fifty-seven forty-three, I'm sorry, fifty-seven forty-three will cover the, um-
The concrete itself, yeah.
Oh, wow. The fifty-seven forty-three will cover the concrete for, for that project. So, the plus is-
Donate the labor as well.
Right, the plus is the labor that will be donated from the city for the, for the forms. First Friday's Art Walk, fifteen seven seventy-nine, we left the same. The Fairfield Volunteer Center mural for ten thousand. And that was another one that the, the request still doesn't cover what they consider project totals, so. That, that figure has floated up and down and back and forth since we started looking at this project. And so, we agreed to, or we decided to hold off on that one right now until they can determine that the funds will be all raised before we commit to anything. Golden Magnolia.
Excuse me, I just understand that.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm just understanding.
That's the mural underneath the trench bridge.
Right, right, what's the reasoning for not granting?
Because with the grant that they're requesting from us, it still won't fund the project.
I see.
So, rather than commit ten thousand to something that isn't gonna be funded, fully funded. That, that's, we decided that's not a, a good use of public funds right now. So. The next one is Golden Magnolia. They requested fourteen thousand five hundred, they do meals for, for Food Insecure. We took a look at that, the, the application itself is fairly vague, the operational expense, equipment and food. Operational expense would include salaries and stuff like, and, and various things. So, we agreed to a five thousand dollar commitment to them, but we are limiting it to equipment and food only. Habitat for Humanity requested ten thousand. We, we'd like to give them the ten thousand, but I think we're gonna do this, we're gonna source this out of LMI funds, which we're allowed to do. So, rather than do it out of lost funds, I think that'll get moved to LMI. So, there won't be any, any grant or any gift out of this one, out of the lost account here. Jefferson County Hospital Foundation requested eighty-nine thousand twenty-four twenty-five. And the reason this is the foundation is because it's a timing issue. It's for the badge printers for emergency and city employees that we have. The previous time this came up, the county paid for it, the time before that, the hospital paid for it. So, it's kind of a round robin thing. The, the foundation is just kind of a pass through for this, so it's not really the foundation requesting the funds. It's the, the Jefferson County Hospital itself requesting.
Just to be clear, Tom, I think you, you, I think you said eighty-nine thousand, you probably meant eighty-nine hundred.
Eighty-nine hundred, I'm sorry. I need new glasses. Eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four twenty-five was the amount, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The next one is the Kahigi Historical Golf Foundation, forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty. Which the Fairfield Golf and Country Club is now a historical landmark and is a non, can be, the, the foundation itself can be offered as a nonprofit. They asked for forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty to pay half of a junior golf program they'd like to run this summer. The, the application itself is a little vague exactly what the, the specifics were. They had a lot of benefits to junior golf and everything listed, which I completely agree. But for what the money was used for was a little vague, that wasn't really spelled out on there. As near as we could tell, they were looking at an eighty-two thousand five hundred dollar golf camp for a week this summer at, at their course, so. We, we did deny that one, a little unclear exactly what it was all for. The twenty-five hundred for Live on the Square, we agreed to. The Madsen-Bardenes Preservation Committee for three thousand eight hundred and sixty-one, we agreed to. Noah's Ark was eight thousand five hundred, and I believe that was up from seven thousand five hundred last year. A, a, a great organization, great group, we did agree to that one also. The notification app, six thousand. This is not the app that Brett had come and talked to us, it's not the emergency one, this is more the weather and news app.
Not weather.
Not weather, I'm sorry. News closures. City.
City business.
City business. Which is different than the other one, it's-
Trash days delayed one day.
Street postings.
Thank you.
Water vein breakage.
Yep.
Yep. So, we, we did agree to that one for the six thousand. And the last one is Singing Cedars School, who requested fifty thousand. And, and we did deny that one at this time. So, that left us, do you have your things still, I don't have my total here, with thirty-
Thirty-one thousand two four.
Thirty-one thousand two hundred and forty dollars and eighteen cents available in lost funds for proj, upcoming projects for the fiscal year. So, I think last year we had four thousand left in that account going into the, into the year. This year we have thirty-one thousand, which will make it quite a bit easier to, to fund some needed projects that are upcoming. That we're unaware of at this point, so. And I think that's all I have on this. I think Doug maybe wanted to talk about the sustainability coordinator position.
Yeah.
Good go.
Before you go there, does anybody have any questions for Tom on any of these things? Okay.
Yeah, so, go ahead, Doug.
Okay, so during this morning's meeting with Waste Means Committee, we got to the portion of the budget where the, as you might recall, the city has committed, well, is being asked to commit fifteen thousand dollars the next fiscal year to support the sustainability coordinator's position. So, that's in the budget already. It would be the third year of fifteen thousand dollar installments. And if you recall, MIU has also agreed to pay three fifteen thousand dollar installments. If my understanding is correct, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, isn't the third payment in the process of being, that check has been cut and in the process of being approved?
Yeah, the city should have it in a week.
Okay. And then, aside from those two donors, there are about fifty or fifty-four private donors, is that right? And her, the cost is about seventy-four thousand a year. The city and MIU put in thirty, that means every year we've raised our margin, and have raised forty thousand plus dollars from these fifty to fifty-four donors each year for three years. So, right now, the coordinator's position is funded, if we pass it, this budget with that fifteen thousand dollars included, is funded through December twenty-five. Now, it would have been end of June twenty-five, except our first sustainability coordinator here, Rachel, did not stay the full time, she left after a year. And then we had a gap of a few months where we did not have a sustainability coordinator, and then we hired Faith in November of twenty-three. Okay, so, today. We'll have in front of you a list of accomplishments that the sustainability coordinator has. I would say this is probably a partial list of accomplishments, Faith's accomplishments since November twenty-three to current February twenty-five. And I just wanna point out a couple of little things here. The rec probably has thirty members in it, and we've had monthly meetings there. So, she's, she's run and organized fourteen meetings of that group, kept it together over a one and a half year timeframe. And that group is broken down into six subcommittees. And she also runs each of those subcommittee meetings, which amounts to twice a month, over fourteen months, I don't, twenty, over thirty meetings, subcommittee meetings. And then she documents all this in Google Docs. So, she's been managing that whole group for a year and a half. And down here below there, you will see she collaborated with Galen Satterley, Brettopia, and submitted a swap grant for the Wakashi Food Waste Compost Pilot Program. And that was submitted in twenty-four, when was that awarded?
It was awarded a few, maybe two weeks after it was submitted.
Oh, very quickly then.
Yeah, it was a real quick turnaround.
Okay.
And the project will keep going this spring for that pilot.
How much was that for?
The requested funds were thirty-six hundred, there was a, what, twenty-five percent match that the, I can't have to come up with, so the requested funds were thirty-six hundred, it's a pilot, so.
Just, this wasn't the original grant then that was-
No, that was-
That we wrote?
Yeah, that was-
Cause I think that was the year before, right?
It was what Rachel wrote.
A USDA grant.
Yeah, okay.
So, that one wasn't the one.
Okay.
Okay. Faith also led the effort to put together the EJCCG, or E, Environmental Justice Community, what's the second C stand for?
Environmental Justice Community Change Grant.
Community Change Grant, that was the big twenty million dollar grant that we submitted a few months ago.
November twenty, November twenty-first, twenty-four.
Right.
What's the status of that?
It's still being reviewed.
In review, but with the new administration, there is pause on anything with the word environmental justice in it, I would say, right now.
Okay, so the city generously contributed five thousand dollars to the grant writing costs there, and other donors came up with, Chuck Esby in particular, twenty-five thousand.
Chuck Esby came up with fifteen and twenty-five.
Fifteen thousand. And the rest of it came from-
Cambridge, five.
Hmm? Cambridge, okay. And there's about, a little less than two thousand dollars left in that fund.
To be determined.
Okay, to be determined. But that money's earmarked for further grant writing. I think we developed a really nice relationship with the Kitchen Sink people, and they wrote us at no cost to the city NEPA Thriving Communities Grant, which was submitted in January twenty-five, and we should hear about that pretty soon, I think, right?
Three-month review.
Okay, and I won't go through the rest of these, but you can read them. Faith has done a great job reaching out to the community. Strategic partnerships, of course, with MIU. In fact, just today, do you wanna describe what you're gonna do with the trash cans at Waste Management, Mayor? In fact, just today, do you want to describe what you're going to do with the trash cans at Waste Management, may or may not pick up?
Do I want to?
Well, someone, yeah.
Well.
I estimate there's going to be somewhere in the order of four thousand trash cans or more to be picked up or disposed of or used somehow.
Yeah, so we've been working on figuring out what to do with all the trash cans once the new carts are delivered. We're going to have all of these crap, trash cans that may not be utilized at the home. So we're trying to determine what are the next best uses, so we've got a nice list of next best use for the materials, different material types of trash cans. And then we've been in conversation with Iowa. Iowa Waste Exchange, trying to figure out if we collected them. And we're able to get all of them kind of tallied and material type, would they take them? It sounds like they will take them. It sounds like Tom has coordinated the location where we can schedule drop off for those cans in the future once the carts have been delivered. And then Anne is working on perhaps maybe a workshop for retrofitting those cans. We'll, we'll design a workshop for retrofitting the cans for those people who would like to keep them, but use them for something different that is not just basic dry storage.
Right, and the purpose here is to keep them out of the landfill.
Yeah.
And they're not, they cannot be recycled, is that the?
Some, some can.
Doing on the nature of the material, but.
Yeah.
By and large, they cannot be.
Well, it depends on what type of plastic they're made out of. And so we'll have, you know, high density, low density, polypropylene and metal. And the galvanized metal, you know, there'll be different types. So, and so it's just advising what would be a good next best use for the type of can you have, and have it be safe.
So the idea is to kick this off late spring, early summer, at the same time that Waste Management is bringing out the bins and delivering them to the homes. Okay, so this morning, I suggested to Ways and Means that we consider extending her contract through to June of twenty-four, twenty-six. So complete the fiscal year. And that would mean that her salary would be paid in part out of the general fund and in part out of the solid waste account that she's currently, we're currently taking the fifteen thousand dollars per year out of. And according to Rebecca, it was actually her suggestion. No, for the general fund as a source of money. Did you not?
Yeah, because we have no other.
But you offered it nicely.
Okay.
That would have been sixty-seven percent out of the general fund. And because that portion is paid out of the general fund, then that portion of sixty-seven percent of her benefits can also be paid out of the, can be levied for on the levy tax rate, just like we levy for other employee benefits. The other thirty-three percent would come from waste, solid waste. And her benefits would have to be paid for out of that fund as well. And that comes to about twelve thousand dollars. And then the general fund would be taxed for sixteen thousand, and then they levy for the eight thousand for her benefits. So that's for half a year. And I brought this up at Ways and Means this morning as an idea, and Tom wanted me to bring it to the full council for discussion. So Tom Brooks and Marg and Anne and Faith and I, well, are on the management team, they're all here to answer questions. Faith is here to answer questions. I can't recommend Faith more highly as an employee. She's got an enormous skill base, it's just amazing what she can do. I'm always amazed after I meet with her and see what she does. And I think that it'd be wise of us if we could find a way to keep her on board as an employee. She would, if she's being paid thirty-three percent out of solid waste, that means she would spend thirty-three percent of her time on sustainability and resilience issues, of which twenty-nine or thirty came out of the Fairfield Forever Plan. Is that right? And so she would be addressing issues that the council has already adopt, well, not adopted formally, but has received as part of that plan. And then the remaining sixty-seven percent is undetermined. But I asked, I asked Doug if he could speak to this because he has needs that the city are being unmet and can speak to her skills that he, as he knows them, and dealing with her for the last year and a half.
Sure, so, so Faith has demonstrated that she's got a great skill set, data collection and research and working with others. There's a lot of initiatives that, from my perspective, and, and as a council, I think we need to discuss this more, that the housing initiatives that we have and that the downtown initiatives that we have, all of these things fall in line. I do feel like that the skill sets that, that Faith does bring, does align with what she's doing. And, you know, this is at the, the council's discretion of how we move forward. But I, I've been pleased with, with all the things that have been going on and, and working with her closely and with the RAC themselves.
So the, Anne, could you give us a summary of where the plan that's being written is at and when it might be finished?
Yeah.
And I know you're talking about starting to implement some of the suggestions or plans this summer, but.
So out of the six subcommittees, each of the subcommittees have spent the last, you know, year of time kind of narrowing down the areas of focus, and they've gone through a eight-step process. And these processes take a couple of weeks or sometimes more to work through, to really define what it is that we're trying to focus on. So each one of the subcommittees have anywhere from three to five subthemes that they're focusing on. Three of the subcommittees have finished all of their steps and have compiled their, their collective work into a draft outline of their section of, you know, a, a resiliency plan, whatever, whatever you want to call it, a resilience action plan with projects, milestones, potential funding sources, partnerships, implementation partners, and then a communication plan that'll go for each one of those subthemes. We're waiting for the other three subcommittees to finalize, and they're all in the last two steps right now. So we're waiting for them to finalize so that we can get it all together as a whole body of work and look to see how the milestones, how the projects lay out, how the communication plans will lay out so that we can be more cohesive in developing those aspects of it. But it's coming together, I would say by end of March, we'll have a body of work for you all to, I mean, we can piece it out for you now, but we'll have a body of work that potentially would be a little more appetizing to look at and to view. But the land use subcommittee, the food waste subcommittee, and the waste management subcommittee have finished their step work, and now we're polishing that final out, you know, the draft of what that might look like.
And then the implementation phase begins after that.
Yes, and, and, you know.
And there are people vying at the bit to get started on something concrete and physical in the community, although we tried to crowd them in and keep it focused on writing a plan first, so we have a nice guide rails up for us to proceed.
So we're not scattered, trying to work on projects before we've actually finished the work of decide, you know, getting, getting something pulled together. But with the, you know, the Community Change Grant, with the Thriving Communities Grant, we focus heavily around housing. That has been a deep interest of buildings and energy, of, you know, food waste, of waste management, those aspects of quality housing. We've been focusing, how do we attack, how do we approach quality housing from the work that the RAC is doing? And so we've been, you know, really trying to get some shovel-ready projects lined up for those, those, those groups and then seeking funding. I mean, that's our goal, is to not bring you projects that we need you now to figure out how to implement. We want to bring you projects that you want to get behind, and we can help find the funding and help find the implementation partners to do it.
Thank you.
So Doug, with what you're proposing, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm unclear, as you, did you find the, the find the funds in the general fund and in waste?
Solid waste.
You did find it?
Yes, they're there.
Okay, so we don't have to increase any fees on solid waste?
Well, you know, if you wanted to create a funding stream for the, this position for the first half of the calendar year next year, you could tag on twenty-three cents, I think it is, to the recycling portion of the water bill. But it doesn't have to be so.
Because we've got a cushion in there, you're saying?
Yes.
And you found the other?
Rebecca tells me there's sixteen thousand available in the general fund.
We would be using the fund balance, there's not a revenue.
Yeah, it's not a, right, it'd be the fund balance that would be used.
This position is funded through December this year?
Yes.
With the current funding?
Yes.
And sorry, can you break down that funding once again? I know that, I probably know it, we contributed how much?
Fifteen thousand a year for three years.
Fifteen thousand for three years, and then what are you asking now? Total of?
Sixteen thousand out of the general fund.
The total.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
It would be.
Thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand for six more months?
No, twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand because, twenty-nine thousand in cash from the general fund and for the solid waste.
But we'd still be levying for it.
Eight thousand, eight thousand would be levied for benefits.
For benefits, and that's for six months?
Thirty-seven thousand.
For six months?
Yes.
Okay.
So the additional fundraising that was there before is not happening for this additional six months?
Right.
But they're going to continue fundraising the rest of this year, and then we'll see where we're at.
We don't have confirmation of it yet, you know, and because it's not until January of next year. So nothing's been committed, we haven't received any donations yet for twenty-twenty-six, so.
So they ask for the city to commit to pay the full.
I, I think we're informing you what the situation is right now, and it is funded for, through December.
He asks for the city to commit to pay the full salary through June.
We're informing you what's needed to cover it until.
From January.
It's not, it's not an ask?
Well, we can't, yes, it is an ask, but we can't do, act on it tonight. It'll be part of the budget.
So if we can't act on it tonight, what are we doing?
No, we're informing you.
You're hearing about it, just like you've heard about everything else, I guess.
Okay.
But I, I, I don't think it was in the original budget that was added back in. The original budget that they presented to Ways and Means, so.
This is in addition to the budget that submitted to us.
Okay, so why would we want to fund beyond the end of this year?
Because she's going to start implementing presumably the, the projects, and thirty-three percent of her time would be spent doing that, and the other sixty-seven percent taking care of whatever Doug R. thinks needs to be done, in particular with working with Weston and P and Z.
Is there a situ, I mean, is there a situation where we would, since we're not voting on it?
We never talked about that.
Well, that's what Doug mentioned to me today, he's mentioned to me in the past. But it's, it's two to one, so if, if thirty-three percent of the funds come out of solid waste and the other general fund monies could, could be used for recycling if you want, or directed in another direction, if you like.
I, and I don't want to start into a discussion on this either right now.
It comes into what her job description would look like.
I don't agree with doing the, the thirty-three and sixty-six because then that limits the fundraising we can do outside because now you're cutting her job to thirty-three percent of the time. So they're looking at, if they were paying a third of her total salary, now they're paying a third of thirty-three percent and will be obligated for the remainder of that. If we continue on the path that we've done so far, we continue funding it the way that we have if we raise the donations and M U M continues their donation, their contribution for that. So we didn't talk about doing it through, I, I know it's been discussed, but we did not discuss it in committee at all about doing anything with planning and zoning, P and Z. So I don't agree doing that because.
Why are you doing?
Huh?
What?
Doug and, and I.
That's what he's discussing, that's what he's mentioning here.
Had a casual discussion, conversation about other responsibilities she might take on for the city other than sustainability. And it, it came up as an idea, but it's not formalized.
Is there any reason to believe that, that, that there might not be funds raised from donors and from MIU as they have in the last, as they had done so in the last two years?
Right now, I would say no, but we can't count on it if it's not committed, you know.
There's not a commitment because it was a three-year temporary position.
Right.
So that's currently where we're sitting.
So any, any funds that they raise that are in excess of what's needed for this year through twenty-five would just be bumped into next year's? So it would defray the cost to the city, any funds that they raise?
So the ci, so this is a position, as I understand it, first, I'm just asking these questions as this come up. This is a system fund which was funded in three different parts by three different revenue, three different source of revenue, right? Streams. And now the, the, we want to change it to one revenue stream and turn, and make the, is that correct? And the city is responsible for the, for the salary. What happens after, is there a speculation, what happens after June of twenty-twenty-six?
No.
Yes, they're try, they're trying to get it through fiscal year, match it up with the fiscal year ultimately.
I have one question, and I know, I mean, Faith has been doing so much work, obviously, and you're always at council and presenting different things. And I know, you know, you, the RAC and everybody has been focusing on community-wide issues, I guess, and plans that sometimes I feel like some of the discussions overlap sometimes with what city council does. And so I, I mean, that's one, one question that I have. The other question would be if her position has been funded by many different stakeholders, has that impacted, like, the things that you guys have researched or the plans that you've thought about? And then now we're just going to, it's just going to be city, so probably not, no.
I honestly haven't, other than you and MIU, I haven't been informed of any of the donors, I don't know who they are. So they haven't, they haven't influenced my influence on the RAC. The RAC has, you know, all, all of the areas of focus have come from, you know, individuals living in the community, observing what is happening in their neighborhoods and wanting to deal with issues. And then we're also reviewing the Fairfield Forever Plan to make sure that what we're focusing on is a good match for issues that the city has wanted to deal with. So I don't think that the donors have influenced the work. And then the overlap, I think there's definitely overlap because it's really hard to have so many committees and so many activities and so. But I'm trying to be as present as I can, you know, in as many of the committees as I can so that I can be informed and, and not have redundancies, and then match wherever possible and try to plug in where I, you know, where I can.
So my understanding today is that your, your job today is full-time sustainability coordinator. To me, what it sounds like we're trying to make happen is thirty-three percent of the time she's going to do the actual job she was hired for, and then you're going to fund it from somewhere else, so then you're going to just assign other duties, which to me.
Well, whatever Doug R.
That needs to be talked about.
Howard Doug R. decides to use for skill base is how she would be.
But that's not what she was hired for.
I, I don't think anything's going to be decided tonight because we haven't discussed this.
I, sorry, I just felt like I need to make that point.
No, I know, I know, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting is.
Hours that we met, this was never talked about.
Correct.
When we had our contractor, when we had hired her, I believe in your guys' discussion, they even list in there that fifteen percent of her time is supposed to be towards trash and recycling, is that correct?
I believe it was thirty percent.
Well, originally it was thirty-three percent because we thought the budget for her would be about forty-five thousand.
Okay.
But then the budget became seventy-five thousand. So then the percentage she had to spend toward that particular area diminished.
Diminished. And so unless she's doing a hundred percent trash and recycling.
I heard you say that today.
Yeah, that's why.
You can't pay it out of solid waste unless she's spending all of her time doing that.
Correct.
that.
Correct. And sustainability has a lot to do with that, but that's not a hundred percent trash and recycling. It's everywhere.
So, I think, like I said, we're not gonna get this figured out tonight.
And it's not a decision that needs to be made tonight.
Right. I do suggest that you maybe talk to Doug, get some feedback from Doug, get some feedback from Tom or Doug. Let be careful about what committees you're on and, you know, how, how you have those discussions, right? Because we, we ought to make sure we stick to-
Is this something we want personnel then to look at?
Well, that's a fair question. So, maybe we should move it to personnel.
I mean, I, I think, I think it needs to be organized to one voice and if personnel would like to look at it. I, I think that would be the way to go.
Yeah. Okay. Would you make a motion, please?
I would make a motion to move this to Personnel Committee, to move the Sustainability Coordinator funding for twenty-twenty-six, for the first half of twenty-twenty-six to Personnel Committee.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Estee. Further discussion?
I'm sorry?
This fiscal year twenty-twenty-
I said this, I, I said calendar year. Did I not say calendar year? First half of calendar year twenty-twenty-six.
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just asking, why wouldn't this not be a Ways and Means decision or Ways and Means topic? Because we're talking about funding.
Well, I think they're gonna determine what that job description ultimately would be.
I think we would want to know what the position is first, before we fund it.
It's, a lot of things have been talked about, but because two-thirds of the money would come out of the general fund, not only one-third out of wa, solid waste, there has to be some other responsibilities that she takes.
Now, yeah, I suppose it could come out that we want her to, you know, you want her to focus on a hundred percent. And so, you're gonna change it. You might make a different suggestion. So, anyway, this is just on the table as a possible suggestion. So, let Personnel review it and then they can report back. So, with that, there's a first and second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. That was moved to Personnel. Okay. City Administrator report.
I don't have a lot on the report because everybody knows what I'm doing. And that is budget. And I want to thank everyone that works for the city in the Ways and Means Committee. Melanie and Rebecca have been working very, very long hours trying to compile this. And then, us going back and forth, department heads making the cuts that we asked them to and working well together. I appreciate that. The Ways and Means Committee, they all three have a great set of skills that they bring and catch the errors. We have to refine some of the spreadsheets to make sure that our decimal places are where they need to be, correcting some language, that sort of thing. But after weeks and weeks and weeks of getting through it, this is a big chunk. And nobody got really upset. Some of the department heads, I, I think they're mad at me, but it is what it is. I'm the bad guy. A couple of other things, been working, again, we already talked about it, working with the county. We really want to get these agreements done with the Sunrise Trails, but that's also protecting Malmston Barnes. And so, it's, it's not a point of contention. It's just making sure that, that everybody gets what they need and they're really particular about protecting this property. I wanted to bring up that a couple of thing, cost-saving measures with the budget, that the library and the, the library and the RAC Center have talked about is reducing their hours. And one is for efficiency reasons, but also that the library, it came to me because it is something we did talk about, that, I can't remember which one it was, whether it was the RAC Center or whether it was the library, but reducing their hours just to even one day a week, reducing it back one day a week, not just one day a week only, could save upwards of thirty thousand dollars a year in personnel because eighty percent of your budget is personnel. But the library said that they are discussing about bringing their hours back to six P.M. And I don't know whether they'll go any deeper or not, but they're also shifting their, their staff around to going from full-time to part-time and working with, with individuals to make that work a little bit better for the public. But our jobs are to provide a service and, and those services are based on the amount of revenues that we bring in. And so, as things go down, so do services. As things go up, we increase our services. But other than that, I sit for questions if there's anything else.
I would request that between you and Rebecca and Melanie and any department heads in the Ways and Means, that we create a one-pager or a two-pager, however many pages it takes, to discuss where we cut, whether it's, or a freeze on hiring, just lay out those things that we needed to do to balance this budget so that we can share that with our legislators and our public when we have our, I'm assuming we're gonna have another public hearing and invite the county and the hospital and the schools. And I think that's a really good idea that we did last year. I'd like to see that happen again. And I think it would be really good for the legislators to understand how, what they do affects our budgets.
We'll be, we'll be discussing the public budget presentation in April after we get everything completely refined and we make more sound decisions on, on the next steps. But we will be scheduling that and I'll bring those things to you. We're still in February.
The legislators may not ever come. We've invited them to participate in our sessions, but they're in sessions, so it's hard for them to get here. But it would be worthwhile for them to know. After our first legislative meeting with the chamber, let's just say there was, you know, I would say there were a little bit of rub between city and state. So, I think, I think it'd just be good to have a piece of paper where they can actually see those things. I have one other question, and that has to do with our new white sidewalk trail that was completed last year down South Main Street. And what I noticed the other day when I was coming in town, I saw a older person, who I think lives maybe in South Gate, walking on the sidewalk full of snow, because none of those sidewalks or probably eighty or ninety percent of them had not been shoveled. Is that, whose responsibility is that?
Property owner.
Streets turning?
You know, I'm like, is it churches?
It's officially bike trail, isn't it?
It is, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's bike trail.
It's a bike trail. So, it's not the property owner's responsibility.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify.
Yeah. And when it was first discussed, Joe and Pam, we put them in a boxing ring and Joe lost. And so, it is the Streets Department's responsibility. But understandable that it's not the highest responsibility. And I think it just wasn't discussed with him this season. A reminder that you lost that boxing match. And so, you have, that's part of the duties.
Okay. So, okay. Well, it concerned me when I saw.
Yeah.
So, that entire length is officially part of the trail system?
Yes. Yes. Well, it's, yeah.
The trails are divided into three different, into-
Speed wagon spokes.
Two, yeah.
Yeah. And so, this would not be part of the loop trail, but it would be the wagon or the spokes.
Would that part come all the way into Fillmore then? That's our responsibility? Or?
Because it stays wide all the way to Fillmore, right? I mean, it's at least, it's more than five foot all the way to-
Can't remember upon the corner.
Fillmore.
There it is.
Yeah. When it's, I believe the whole thing is designated as the trail. So, it would all be part of that.
Okay.
Yep. And I did receive a call from one of the adjacent property owners. And it was like three days ago. And we didn't go out and do anything because I knew it was gonna melt. But we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Make sure we have a plan for next year.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, I'll tell my questions. Anybody have anything else? Any questions for Doug or Melanie? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Moved by Estee.
Second.
Second, Mike and S. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.
Will then.